I'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Before we stand for the pledge, we've been doing this where we have students from around the district come in and lead us in the pledge. So tonight, we have John Quay Liggins, Jr. He's a fourth grade student at Krogan Elementary and Mrs. Vogts class. And his parents are Cheryl and John Quay Liggins, Senior. So he will be leading us in the pledge tonight. So if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
This is Bloom here, Ms. Lehman, Ms. Lewis here, Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held April 28, 2025, please?
I'll move.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Bloom. Yes, Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to legislative report.
Ah, yes. I just wanted to mention number of with the adequate equity and adequate adequacy. There's a good publication that talks a little bit about some of the issues with the lawsuit regarding the Ed Choice private school voucher program. And in the information that I either sent or will be sending to you, talks about five different areas that need to be revisited in the kind of in the legal system right now. And dealing with our, our constitution, what it calls for. And then also talking basically about the framers of our constitution, wanting the public dollars to go toward public schools and not necessarily private and religious schools. The other part of that is their information shows 90% of the private schools that are receiving the, the public dollars are the religious education's component schools. And and one of the things that happens there is there's more choice by the school as to who they accept. And there's definitely an issue being created for, I think a lot of this, when this was happening, was to allow students of that were economically challenged and for different reasons, to be able to get into those schools. And what's happened now is those schools are receiving the dollars from the state. And then in turn, what is happening is they're also charging tuition. And now some of those poorer or economically challenged families are having a tough time meeting that need of the private school. So that's one of the issues and we have Representative Click here tonight for another purpose. But I had just mentioned to him, I wanted to kind of sit down and talk to him a little bit about at a, at a later point about some different issues. And you know, this is definitely one of the issues that I was concerned about. The timely process. There's the Senate hearings are starting basically this week. Senate Education Committee meets tomorrow. On the information that I sent you, there's components of the best ways to share, share your feelings, whether if it's a testimonial, whether in writing or in person. And then in the, there's a list of a number of bills that are being proposed or in, or in the works. And, and again, that the one area that we talked about at the last meeting and is that concern with the cash balance at that 30% and how that affects planning. It affects our ability to get property taxes. It pushes us in that direction. And when we're in those property taxes, those are projected out. And you kind of end up getting a little bit more at the beginning because things are going to cost a little bit more at the end of that. So, end of that levy cycle. And so we want to make sure those things are, are considered. There were numerous people with testimony on those different issues. The Health House Education Committee, as we've seen on the federal level and state level, is basically the continuation of the removal of the DEI diversity, equity and inclusion component as a as an issue that schools and everybody has been using for years. That, those are kind of a couple of the highlights. And that's all I had for this evening. But again, there's that information. And if anybody wants a copy of this, just to contact the superintendent's office. And she can either forward or get you a hard copy. And that's all I had this evening.
Thanks, Dan. Moving on, no walk on items tonight.
Okay.
Next part is the community section of our agenda. If anyone would like to address the board, they could come up to the podium to state your name and address for records. If there's anything they would like to bring up, we'll open that up right now. I think everybody is here for presentation. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Board members, good evening. Good evening to all of our guests with us in the audience this evening. We do have definitely some things to celebrate this evening and we are honored with the privilege of, and I'd like to introduce the Honorable Representative Gary Click, who represents the 80th District in Ohio, which is part, Sandusky County is part of his region that he oversees. We are very grateful for Representative Click to be with us and his presence this evening. And he has a shout out for some of our students. So students who are going to be recognized, we would like to invite you to come up front.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt, and thank you, President Price and distinguished members of the school board today. I thank you, first of all, for the work that you do for our young people in education. And I look forward to future conversations. My door is always open to discuss any issues that are before you and sitting as a member of the Ohio House Committee on Education, I get a front row seat to some of those things. So I'm, I'm always happy to have those conversations. And I am grateful for the hard work that you do. But tonight, at least not this part, is not about you. It's about these fantastic students. And when I was invited to come do this, I didn't have to think twice. I said, yes, please, where and when? Because I am so proud of you. I really am. And you've made positive life choices for yourselves. And not, you know, it's great to make, and moms and dads, you all, and grandmas and grandpas, you all, I'd be very proud of these young people. Because it's, it's not just enough to make a positive life choice for yourself, but you are using positive peer pressure and education and your influence to, to introduce this concept to others and to influence others to make right life choices for themselves. And these are life choices that will pay huge dividends the older you get. In fact, quite honestly, can save some lives. So I have this commendation. I have several commendations here. They all say the same thing, except for your name. And they don't all have the same name. And, and so let me just read to you what it says, and then I will present these to you. Says, "On behalf of the Ohio House of Representatives of the 136th General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend a special recognition to," and then it'll have your name there. And then it will say, "You have stood up against vaping, an epidemic that plagues many Americans. And seeing this problem and calling it out, you've taken a step in making the world a better place. You have seen a problem, and instead of being complacent, you've taken action to solve the problem. One of the best ways to raise awareness for a problem is to use your gifts to spread a message. And you've used your gift of art. And I was looking at this art over here. It's fantastic. I wish I was artistic like you, like you folks are. As you've used your gift of art to raise awareness of the dangers of vaping. Thank you for your hard work. It will make our world a better place. Thus, with great pleasure, we commend you on using your gifts and talents to advocate against vaping and the, and extend the best wishes for your, for your continued success in future endeavors." And then signed Gary Click, State Representative. And so I will present these to you. Hopefully I get them. I think they're in order. I don't know if they're in order or not. In order. But so where is? There we go. Okay. And then thank you. I refuse. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Very proud of you. And next, we have Melody Brown. Malia Crowe. Eva George. Congratulations. Eleanor. There we go. Congratulations, Eleanor. And I'll just read the names of some of these other students who were not able to make it tonight. But they had other obligations, but they deserved to have their name called out tonight as well. And this is J.C. Bilo. And I know that we will make sure they get those. We will make sure that they get these. Evan Luke. Sheila Nord. Rob Marino. Caleb Wright. Last, but not least, Diamond McDuffie. Can you join me in just recognizing these young people?
Yes, we can.
Careful on the cords, guys.
Yes, please be very careful on the cord.
Yeah.
Behind their art.
Oh, that would be nice.
While they are capturing that photo, I'll just tell you just a little bit about the photo voice exhibit that our students participated in.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hurt.
Yes.
Could they do a picture maybe behind with all the ladies standing behind the artwork?
Absolutely.
That might be a good.
Do you mind?
Just trying to create supreme opportunities here.
As you can see, the artwork is varied. We mostly have photos that the students created in photography class with Mr. Bradley Scherzer. And Mr. Scherzer is with us this evening as well. So a shout out to our instructor. And this project came in coordination with the Health Department. And we also have with us Jamie Belcher, who is one of the health educators from Sandusky County Health Department. We have a sculpture piece as well as the variety of photos. And so the students used their voice. They allowed their voice to be captured with their artwork to send that anti-vaping message. And as Representative Click stated, you know, this is not only their message for themselves, but their opportunity to share their voice. And I think that we could not be prouder on behalf of the school district. Their artwork participated at the Spooktacular event way back in October. And just very recently, they were invited to Columbus and did a presentation at State House for one of our prevention partnership conferences. So they were able to present in a panel format to a room full of adults that they had no idea who they were. And they represented in an amazing fashion. So very, very proud of our students and their artwork and all of the wonderful pieces that they have here with us. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity of allowing you to see our students, their artwork, and to highlight them a little bit. And very thankful for Representative Click for taking some time to be with us this evening. Thank you, sir.
I have to make a quick note. I got to see the whole presentation at the Spooktacular at the Y. What an amazing display that those kids put on. Multiple tables. I mean, it was just a whole piece altogether. Pretty outstanding. So congratulations to our art students, to Mr. Scherzer. And then thank you to Jamie Belcher for arranging that for them to go down to Columbus. That's how you make a voice. That's how you get things done and get the word out. So you guys learn firsthand going down to Columbus, what it's like to actually be a part of something, even if you're just an art student at Fremont, Ohio. Your voice can still be heard a lot of different places. So congratulations and thank you for all the hard work that you guys did.
I'm going to be a little indulgent and extend an invitation to any of you who would like to speak about what your experience was. No pressure situation. If you, if you would prefer not to, that's fine. But what your experience was like either at the Spooktacular or down in Columbus, displaying your art? Or maybe some of the grownups that were involved.
Would any of the students like to share anything?
No pressure. I mean, when the opportunity presents itself, I always like to make sure that we, that we do that.
You just need to come to the podium so that you, your voice can be heard.
It's cool.
That's okay. Jamie, do you have anything that you would like to add? You just need to speak into the mic.
So I will just share. They were invited to present at the Prevention Action Alliance Advocacy Day, I'm a seat at the table event, April 15. They are one of two youth groups that were asked to present at this four-hour training slash day of advocacy at the State House. So they were personally invited because the individuals who work at Prevention Action Alliance had seen their work and heard about it. Were very excited and they wanted the other preventionists across the state and our legislators who are invited and their aides to hear about the great work these students had done. And so I am so proud of you. I could never have imagined how amazing this project would have turned out when I showed up in your photography class and you were like, what are we doing? What is this? I have no idea what's happening. Who is she and why are we doing this? But it is amazing. Your message has spread far and wide. And I cannot be prouder of the work that you have done. And you should absolutely be proud of yourselves. You took what is a huge issue in our culture. You are experts in your own generation and you put it into photos and art sculpture that really shares the message with the world of what you're seeing. And it is sending a message and it is making a difference. So congratulations. Well deserved.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, just a couple other items within my superintendent's report. First, just a shout out that May typically becomes that opportunity to recognize our staff. And I know that last week, many of our buildings were doing a lot of the different events to recognize them. We shared a message this morning with them as well and just really wanted to make sure that, that the entire community that's listening and is participating in our board meeting has an understanding that we have an outstanding staff of individuals in Fremont City Schools. From people who all day long support our students in just a variety of ways. So shout out, I am thrilled to be the leader of such a staff and making an impact with the children that we do. So want to make sure that everybody hears me say that. Lastly, today we have two committee reports to make. Since I'm talking, I'll just go first and I'll jump over top of Megan for a second. And we'll start with the Policy Committee recently met. And I know that it's a lot. And you all should have received the policy meeting minutes to review. And we do have all of those policies coming up later on our agenda. But, Mr. Nally, I think that you were going to share.
Yeah. As you mentioned, we had met back on May 12. There were a total of 27 policies that were reviewed. A more, majority of the policies dealt with smaller word changings or keeping up with the legislature's changes to our guidelines and requirements. A couple of the areas that were, that we'll see in our policies here are limiting cell phone use during the school day. Which as, you know, as we had, as we had talked about before, you know, definitely will be a challenge. You know, when that is either fully implemented or with the changes that might be coming. Notification to parents regarding Parents' Bill of Rights that kind of adds the technology providers, curriculum review and changes in counseling services. And I'll throw it over to Lori. Do you want to kind of get the rest of those bullet points?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, we did with establishing an appropriate cash balance process. Adjusting the number of days allowable for a student expulsion for extreme situations. Formally allow students to inform that their intent to participate in CCP or second semester, which CCP is college credit plus. So they're extending that out for them. An adjustment to record requests timeline connected to the public rights to null law. And it was a lot.
Did you have anything else?
No.
And just, are all the policies, I didn't count them up. Are all of them in this? Or do we have some at the next meeting?
All of the, there were 27 policies. They're all on the agenda tonight. We just highlighted a few of some of those big topics for, within those meeting minutes.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Megan, finance?
We also had Finance Committee last week and Mr. Price, I believe, is going to share some wonderful things that we discussed in that meeting.
Most of it was revolved around wondering what's going to happen with the biennial budget coming from the state, which obviously we have no idea. The House had a version. It's in the Senate. Senate's going to have their own version. And it's different from the governor's. So it's all up in the air as to what those answers might be. So we're kind of at the, under the thumb of Columbus right now, waiting on that to find out what it's going to be. We reviewed some of the policies that would affect as far as the finances of our district. And like Don said, a lot of it was just verbiage. Something changed, just small words in there that we have to change legally. Other than that, that was pretty much it. So. All right. Moving on to, there wasn't anything else in for your report. Okay. Moving on to recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Item number one, if you would please consider the approval of two donations this evening.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
It's moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number two gets us started on that Security Connector project that we are excited about. So I would ask that you approve the Ben Design Architecture Company, TDA, to be the design professional for our Security Connector project, please.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
Just to mention that we do have experience with TDA with the big project that.
Yep. And I was going to mention, TDA is who designed our high school. So that makes perfect sense that they're doing the connector piece since they built the new high school and connecting it to the natatorium and wrestling room. I wanted to give a little shout out to TDA. I was with Mrs. Hurt. We actually participated via Zoom. But TDA was just recognized in an architectural awards, which is above my pay grade as a cookie maker. So what all they do, I have no idea. But they were recognized and received an award for their design of Fremont Ross High School. So the way that it fit into the community, the feedback that they got. So the way that it fit into the community, the feedback that they got, how it works, how the the mental aspect of it for our kids, on the environment inside as well as outside, all played a part in that. So they receive, I mean, it was a pretty prestigious award. We were there as they were presenting the awards and some of the stuff. I mean, you're talking Cleveland Natural Museum of Art, other libraries, different things like that. It was, it was pretty cool to see. So we love working with TDA. It's always been a great partnership for us. So it's great that they're an architect for this smaller piece of that, that project.
And they're very conscious of cost.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we were, yeah, we stayed under budget for the, for the big building project. So, yep, yep. They're great to work with. So. All right. Roll call, please.
Sorry, got a little distracted writing a note.
Sorry.
Let me scroll back up for a second. Okay. Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Thank you. To go right along with that, item number three, I would ask your approval of Gilbane Building Company for the same Security Connector project. This would allow for Gilbane to be the owner's representative of services for the project.
Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Along with those same lines as TDA, Gilbane was our contractor for all of the elementary buildings and the new high school. So again, it just made perfect sense to have them be the construction manager in this because they built the new high school. So and again, another great partnership. Every step of the way, they were just great to work with. You, you hear horror stories at different build projects and there was none and we were going through COVID. So the work that they did in getting the subcontracts out along with Moser Construction, just again, for that big of a project to do five buildings, crazy amount of work to do and it all just went through great. So another great partner to have that we've, that we have. So. All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Thank you. Beginning with item number four and going through item number 30, please, would be the first reading for those policies that Mrs. Bloom and Mr. Nally highlighted for us and gave us some background on. So item four through 30, if I could seek your approval.
Can I get a motion to approve items four through 30, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
Yeah, you guys know I love me a good policy read. So I do have a few things that I wanted to just point out for discussion. And I have them in order, like how they, how they came in the PDF. Okay. So it would be helpful. Policy DAB, this is just a clerical kind of thing. In the third paragraph, on the last line, there's not a space between the word 60 and the number 60. I can't help how my brain operates.
Okay.
Come on. Are you saying my grammar is not correct?
Megan, get it together. The next policy in DECA.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make sure that since we've talked about DEI a couple of times this evening, briefly mentioned, on page two of that, I just want to make sure that that is compliant with what has been put forth for us. I know that's probably been reviewed at some level, but I just want to make sure that.
I will double check that. Thank you.
And then just one more. In policy, it says GBH.
Can you name the title of that?
Sure. Staff Student Relations.
Thanks.
On page two of that, item number 11, I see what was amended. And it describes like what the staff shouldn't do, but not necessarily what they should do if they're faced with that type of situation. And maybe in some of those cases regarding that content of that piece, it would even behoove us to maybe just say, see, policy JHG, which is the one about, that's included in here as well, about children's services. If that would be applicable.
Absolutely. I will take a look at that. And there may even be, and I'm not positive, there may be a GBHR. Sometimes the regulation has more detail or more specific pieces in the policy. So I don't, and I'm not.
Sure.
But I will certainly take a look at that. You said it's item number 11 in the policy?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. I will take a look at that in front of second reading next time. We can reissue those pieces so that you would, everyone will have that be clear.
Sounds good.
And then at that time, if we aren't comfortable something, want to send it back to policy, we could pull that before the final read.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Thank you. Appreciate the diligence there, Ms. Lewis. Thank you. Item number 31, we're gonna start talking a little bit about some staff achievement pieces. This first item, item 31, we have several individuals who are either resigning or retiring at the end of the year. And just a shout out for these retirements because these are some very longtime individual staff members. So congratulations to Kathy Adams, one of our cafeteria managers retiring from Lutz Elementary, Lynn Quick, who is one of our student monitors at Otis Elementary, and Regina Reed, one of our building secretaries at Otis Elementary. These people have given more than 20-plus years to our staff and students. So they deserve to hear that name. I think that that's a very big moment. Item number 32, I would ask that you approve the following administrative appointment. And I would just like to point out to you that Mr. Nicholas Chaney is with us this evening in the audience and we are thrilled. I am thrilled to bring this recommendation to you. Upon your blessing, Mr. Chaney will become the new transportation manager for Fremont City Schools. He is currently employed in a different role for us within the district, has been with us for many years and is seeking out something new and a new challenge. So I'm very, very thrilled to have that. Item number 33, we have some certified and supports staff substitutes. You know, we cannot survive without them. Number, item number 34, we have some appointments. These are teaching positions and social worker that will get us, continue to get us set up for next school year. So all of these individuals will be in place with us coming forward into the 25, 26 school year. Item number 35, renewal for some of our administrative contracts that first set. Stephen Anway, Christina French, Susan Fry, Kyle Hensa, Susan King, and Rhonda Schmidt, part of our administrative staff that work very, very hard in our district. Item number 36, two other administrative positions, Abigail Doster and Jessica Michael. Item number 37, administrative contract renewal for Mr. Thomas Anway. Item number 38, these are continuing contracts. Now, this is an item that comes before the board once a year in an annual basis. These are teaching staff who have met the requirements for a continuing contract based on the language that is in their FEA contract. And we ask that then they make a presentation of sorts. They bring forth their items. I sit with my cabinet and superintendent and we review all of that. These are staff members that wow us, that have met the requirements and continue to work hard. I do have an ad we inadvertently left off. So you have Brittany Bootzier, Jennifer Kopechek, Erica Cousy and Hunt, Corey Lather, Stacy Lowry, Erica Rudd, and Jennifer Caden, please. We'll tag that into the minutes if you're okay with that.
Yep.
Item number 39, we have approval of many names, beginning with Amber Carbalo and moving through Jennifer Ziegler Long with a two-year contract. And then Jaclyn Atkins through Julia Zucker for a one-year contract. So again, getting our staff ready, up and running, already thinking about next school year. There you go. That was a lot in there.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve items 31 through 39, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Have to admit, when I was first reading through the agenda and I saw resignation of Jason Smith, like, wait, what's going on? And then I saw his name later. I saw Nick's name also as resignation. I had the heads up. He was gonna be the transportation manager. So I wasn't worried about that one because I knew, then I read later and I'm like, okay, there's Jason again. So I'm like, Jason, you didn't tell me what's going on, man. So. Nick, congratulations.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being a part of that and putting your name in the hat to do that. So we look forward for all the good stuff that you're gonna bring to that. So thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, I think it's one of those, when we talk about safety, there's so many components with the transportation area. And, you know, it's, it's, it's quite a responsibility and, and I'm sure you're up for it. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure you'll see a lot of learning to do, a lot of reading. So get those bifocals out. A welcome.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Fabulous. Item number 40, we just pulled out Cassidy Price for all the right reasons here. But I would really like it if we could continue her contract into next.
Pull her out for a couple of the reasons. Can I get a motion to approve item 40, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Abstain and motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number 41, if we could get some extended days for this school year. Just making sure that we have the staff that we need in June to finish out their calendar year. And then item number 42, or some extended days thinking ahead into next school year. Just keeping us organized and ready to go so that we have what we need over the summer and into August. Item number 43, we have a new assistant volleyball coach for us. And item number 44, we have two additional coaches. One is new to us, one is returning. Item number 45, these are status changes for staff. And so either they have produced the documentation that is evidence that they have completed another new level of education or they have met a timeline and have been with us for a certain amount of time. So would ask that we would grant those status changes. Item 46, we are starting to get some of our employment around for summer, our summer program. We have middle school there in item 46. And item 47 will be our staff who will be staffing our summer food service program. And just a quick shout out so all of our community understands that we will once again this summer be providing meals on Monday over the lunch hour. And you can drive through across the back of Ross High School in order to obtain those. It is five breakfast, five lunch, dinner-ish, a bag of produce, a gallon of milk. And it, and you can have one for each member of the child between birth and 18. And you bring them along and you will hand that out. So this is the staff, number nine, and number 47, who will assist us in that. Item number 48 gives us some substitutes for that summer food service program because we'll need to make sure that we have lots of staff on board for that one. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve items 41 through 48, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
Well, Ms. Kathy Adams, what a gal. She's gonna retire and come back. That's, that's commendable.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
And Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Fantastic. Finally for me this evening, sir. Item number 49, this is just simply the approval of the resolution to adopt the special education model policies and procedures that we have finally received from, out of Columbus. We finally have these finished up. We've been talking about them for quite a long time. And you'll see them back on a board agenda in about six months because now they're gonna move the approval timeline. It's usually been a spring thing. It looks like it's gonna be an October, November thing. So we'll go again. But here we go. Model policies of everything.
Something's changing out of Columbus?
Yes.
Can't imagine. That never happens. Can I get a motion to approve item 49, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nick?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Report of the Treasurer.
Good evening. I'm not gonna speak too long tonight. Our next meeting will be my turn to shine and potentially bore you all to tears with my April financials and five-year forecast. The one thing I'm really gonna, we'll just briefly go over April next meeting. The five-year forecast will be my main focus. But I really just want to highlight, this forecast is the most unknown forecast I have ever done. The last budget bill, there was a lot of changes, but this is the biggest I've ever seen. With all the different changes that get changed or come from each movement that this budget bill has gone through. The governors said one thing, the houses said another, and the Senate is potentially gonna have even another. This is, and maybe it's maturity in the position, but this is the most that I've also attended different meetings on where this is at legislatively. Denise and I attended a meeting today put on by North Central with Senator Reinicki. It sounded like he was gonna really take our concerns to heart and take that back to, I believe the bills in the education.
Education Committee has hearing, I believe, this week.
Starting tomorrow.
So he, he sounded like he really understood where we were coming from and how all these changes are gonna throw huge curveballs at us to be able to function as public school districts. So hopefully that holds curious some weight for us.
The room was full in all of his counties. I think he's five counties. There was representation of superintendents and treasurers from his entire region. So.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Lot of voice.
Well represented.
Yes.
There was even, there was even one board member that was in attendance and she, she spoke well.
Yes. So this is a very interesting year for this budget bill. So we'll see what numbers I decide to pop in there. My best guess. Yes, in a very educated manner. Very conservative. Expenses for once in my life are more predictable, which is not the norm.
Sure.
So I just kind of wanted to give you the little bit of a prequel to the forecast that I'll be bringing next meeting. And some area treasures in Sandusky County met with the Sandusky County Budget Commission, which consists of the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county prosecutor, which even the makeup of that could change with the budget bill. There's some verbiage that potentially would change who that all includes. From the prosecutor being taken out to a county commissioner, board president. From the prosecutor being taken out to a county commissioner, board president being put in instead, which they have their own budget that they present to the budget commission. So you can kind of see where that might be having.
Problem.
Conflict of interest, maybe.
Well, and the other challenge with that is that person can change every two years, whereas the hope is that your prosecutors.
Yeah.
Provides more consistency. And I think that legal component is a good thing to have there.
They were, the county auditor and the treasurer were very hopeful that, that either it will be they get to keep it with the county prosecutor or they choose, and they kind of hinted that they would probably keep the prosecutor in that space just because of the legal component for them.
Right.
So it was interesting to hear, you know, I've heard all school treasurers on the budget bill, and it was interesting to hear other, the other side of it. Because the county auditor has to, well, the budget commission certifies our appropriations and our tax levy rates and different things. So it was interesting to hear what they had to say about all these changes. And Mrs. Miller really wasn't, the auditors association as a whole is not behind the, the cap on the, right now it's sitting at 30% for your general revenue carry, or for your general fund carryover balance. So it was nice to hear that support. So it was a very interesting meeting and I see a lot more meetings in my future. But we did plan to meet once everything does get set in stone with this budget bill to meet again as a group and kind of go over what they would like to see from us and what we can provide so that they make sure that they're making decisions because they're ultimately, they can choose whether or not, how much to collect within a certain, some parameters. So we need to make sure that the story we're showing them is a clear picture of our district. So.
And I imagine that won't be anywhere near finalized, that bill, before you present a five-year forecast.
We'll be lucky if it's finalized by the meeting, our last meeting before July 1, when I had to have appropriations set for next year.
Also neat.
Yeah. Because who knows what kind of, anyways, I won't go into that. I'm going to be a little bit crazy the next couple of months, but no one's.
Nobody will notice.
No one will know.
Because everything's a hot mess. So school districts can be a hot mess and it doesn't matter because it's everything that Columbus is doing to the schools. So, or try, or maybe doing to the schools or not doing to the schools, or this or that and everything else. So, gosh, it's just, yeah. All right. No recommendations tonight?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right. Moving on to board member communications. Lori.
Well, thank you to John Quay for the pledge of allegiance. He did very well. And he was going a little speedy at one point, can't slow down. But he did really good for being nervous and shy. And then thank you, Jamie and the art students. That was, that's really neat. It's, it needs to be out there because vaping is so bad. And kids don't get it. Adults don't get it. So, I mean, I have a daughter and her son's like, can you tell my mom? I said, I can tell her, but she is old enough to make her own choice. So I can't make her. He wants her to stop. Mr. Click, Gary Click for handing out the presentations to the kids. That was, that was very nice. And Nicholas, congratulations, welcome to the new. And then on the retirements, congratulations to them for their, their service and enjoy your time. Spend it doing whatever it is you want to do.
Sarah.
Ditto everything that Lori just said. Literally everything that I had written down. Mr. Chaney, we just wish you the best. You have a very supportive superintendent, treasurer, and a board. I'd like to think that we are pretty open to any, any communication necessary. So please make sure that you utilize all of us in whatever way possible, but we're not buying new vans, our new buses.
You gotta get it past Megan first.
So just congratulations. It was, it's, I love having kids here doing what they do. Mrs. Hurt, thank you for inviting the students here and Representative Click. It's, it's always nice to see. And for the students to see how supported they are. Ms. Jamie, thank you so much for, you know, coordinating that whole event from beginning to end. So we really, we really appreciate that. Just a shout out to all the staff. It is teacher appreciation week, month, all of that. Everybody plays an integral role in all that it takes to make this district go. So we're thankful for all the staff that we have in the district. And I was a little nervous too when I saw Jason Smith's name as a. I was so focused on policies that I didn't look like super intently at the agenda. So as I'm sitting here, I'm like, oh. But wonderful that he's going to land, continued in the district. Shout out to all the staff who continue their education. That is tough to continue your education while you're actively working. So we appreciate all of the staff that go above and beyond to do that. And if everybody's kids are anything like mine, there's definitely a countdown to the last day of school happening. So we just wish everybody to finish strong in the school year. Like I said last time, this isn't the, this isn't the time to slack off. This is the time to put it in high gear and make sure you finish strong.
Done.
One thing I noticed around the community, and this is on an ongoing basis, is the yard signs for student of the month. I think that, you know, it's just a great way to recognize those kids. And, and it also gives us an opportunity as citizens to commend the parents when we see those signs in somebody's yard and we know them, you know, just to kind of give them that pat on the back that they're raising good kids. And that's what it's all about with, with children. You know, last month, I think I, I made a comment to Mr. Anway about the outsides of the building and things looking really good. But, and with Nick, Nicholas here, you know, the, the insides of the building, even though we did our survey and, you know, we got pretty good results on that. And the, the place is in really good shape. And I'm sure the summer will, you know, make some changes too with all the, the maintenance that happens during that period. But the facilities are just looking really good. John Quay did a great job tonight. And, you know, we didn't say a whole lot, but with the, the bike, you know, that's just a really neat donation from Carmuse to, to do that and provide that as a, an option. And final thing was, Mr. Price, you're not just a cookie maker. Where would we be without cookies? And that is that, seriously.
A little thinner.
Cookies are important. So that's all I had.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Liggins for coming up and leading the pledge for us. Did a great job as all of our students have done for us so far. So that's a, just a fun way to have some of the kids come in and just even it's a little part at the beginning, but just for them to get recognized and everything. So that's always fun. Congratulations again to our art students for all the work that they put in, also going down to Columbus, to Jamie for helping organize all of that and getting those kids around and helping them get to Columbus and present and talk and everything else that was involved in that. What a great way to have that voice out there. It's just a, it's just a great thing. Thank you for, to Representative Click for stopping in, making the trip here to present those awards to them and their recognition. So another way that their voice is heard. So I hope they take that to heart and see what they can do moving on in the future as they become adults too. To all of our staff, the retirements, congratulations and thank you for all the years of service. I think the other part is, is we know that we have quite a few retirements here in the next few years. But this is a place where people want to come to work also. So we're filling those positions. A lot of times, school districts will have issues filling some of those positions. And we have people wanting to come here. So that's great. So congratulations to those new hires coming into our district and filling those voids that we have. Last thing, spring sports winding down, starting to get into postseason. I know track is NLL this week. Baseball starts next week. I saw we were, for baseball, we're a third seed. So we have a home game, I believe it's next Thursday.
I believe it's Thursday.
So congratulations to them. Big turnaround from, from last year. So it's going in a positive way. So that's a great thing.
We're going to host some, some softball, baseball district level, we'll have some tournament action here in Fremont. So that'd be very nice to do. To invite people into our community.
Yep.
And see those beautiful facilities.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice.
So good luck to all of our athletes these next couple of weeks as we get through postseason and possibly moving on even further. So.
Shout out to Coach Thieson.
Yes, first year. So doing a good job getting those kids around. So yep. Softball's doing well this year too compared to last year. So improvements in the track teams, they're kind of on fire right now. They're, they're doing pretty well. So we'll see how they do going into NLL and postseason for there also.
We do have some middle school track athletes that will be representing Fremont City Schools at their state level action. I believe that they just qualified, I think, today, first Saturday, or maybe it was this weekend, but for next Saturday. We have two relays, four by one and four by two. Sorry, don't have it all. But I know that we do have, outside of those relays, we maybe have three or four other students that are making it on some individual events. So, you know, we wish them the very best as well. That's a big deal for that middle school.
Yeah.
Each level.
Yep. All right.
I forgot one thing.
Sarah.
They love me so much, you guys, I promise.
Policy, we're done.
Music festival.
Oh, yes.
The Saturday here at the, the middle school. I mean, it is a full day of every music program we have in the district, well, middle school, middle school, high school. So choir, show choir, band, orchestra, jazz band, like the marching band will wrap up the day. If you would love to, I, I know that they're going to do some pieces from the Spring Musical at the showcase right here in the cafeteria. It is a great time. There's food, I'm just saying. There's raffles, there's all kinds of stuff. And it's just a really neat opportunity to see our students, much like the art project, share their gifts, talents, and abilities. So.
Nine to three? I believe it's nine to three-ish.
Oh, that part I don't remember.
And, and there's, you mentioned the raffles. There will also be, I believe, like a silent auction of sorts. And new add to that this year, we're trying to blend some support between some of our fine art department and our music, wonderful music department. And so we have a couple of pieces that our art students and staff, a very talented art staff at Ross High School have created. And those items will be in that silent auction raffle piece, supporting the music and going back and forth. So thank you for remembering that. I missed.
It's, and it's a good time. And it's a, it's not a, if you don't have all day to come and sit, it's, it's definitely one of those events where you can just come in and, and leave at your, at your leisure. So hopefully everybody can attend.
All right. With that, can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes. Motion's approved, meeting is adjourned.